Regular meeting of the Fairfield Board of Education is called to order. I am the chair, Mrs. Vitale. I'm joined tonight by board members Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Leeper, Mr. Peterson, Mr. Asa, Ms. Rotelli, Ms. Pitko, Mrs. Gerber, and Mrs. Maxon Canelli. I ask you all to please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hello, everybody. It's nice to see you all in the grid view. At our last meeting, we talked about when the Board of Education would be meeting in public again. I just wanted to give an update. I reached out to the Director of Health today just to find, just to get some guidance on what we need to do when we do meet in person. Right now, the emergency management team is advising all town boards, committees, and commissions to continue to meet virtually where at all possible unless it is essential that they meet in person. I am very cognizant of the fact that we are not just the nine Board of Ed members meeting, that we are joined by our central office staff, by teachers, by our district leadership team. And a Board of Education meeting essentially could become its own little cohort if we were to meet in person. And selfishly, I want to make sure that our educators stay as safe as possible and appreciating that putting you in a cohort with us is not necessary at this particular moment, that our virtual meetings are efficient and doing the trick right now. That said, I do appreciate that school is starting. We are asking our teachers and our students to return to buildings. And on September 8th, the Board of Education is meeting. We will be meeting in person. However, it will still be a WebEx meeting. The nine of us will be together, but the public will not be able to access our meeting. An executive order for indoor gatherings is still in effect. The public will still be able to access our meeting via Fair TV and WebEx. And public comment will still be given through the public comment form and email. I say that right now, I mean, things can change. I'm really hoping that we can find some creative solutions to bring the public back into our meetings, to enable them to give public comment on the spot. But right now, I am sensitive to the fact that we are in a pandemic and trying to model responsible, safe behavior. The safer our community is, the safer our schools will be. So with that, we're moving on to public comments. For those members of the public that are listening, if you would like to give comment, you can give comments on agenda items by completing the form that was posted with the Board of Education's agenda or by emailing publiccomment@fairfieldpublicschools.org. Fairfieldschools.org. Public comment will be posted with the minutes, the meeting minutes. Moving on to all business. Approval of lighting projects at Jennings Elementary School and Roger Level Middle School. Does the Board of Education approve the lighting projects at Jennings Elementary School and Roger Level Middle School? Mrs. Gerber, can I have a second? Ms. Jacobson? Mr. Cummings, I don't know if you want to give any, or Mr. Papa George, any information to the board right now? We did get a very long packet with our, with the agenda. We've had multiple lighting projects like this at other schools. But I will take it to the board for any questions. Seeing none, Mr. Cummings, do you have anything that you would like to?
No. I just want to thank all the work I went into preparing this. I know that we had spent some additional time trying to get the updated information through our providers. So I don't know if Mr. Papa George has any specific comments he wants to make to it, but I appreciate the board's considerations.
I do not. I can answer any questions, or I know Sal is also available with us tonight to answer any questions that people may have in specific. I know there was some concerns raised, as Mike said, and we were able to get to the bottom of those from our vendors.
Does the board have any questions? I'm not seeing any hands up, so we will take it to about all in favor? All opposed? Sentenced? Seeing none? Motion passive, nine zero. Thank you, Mr. Papa George, Mr. Morbido. Moving on to our enrollment projections. Dr. Parrish, hello.
Good evening. So I'm presenting the current enrollment for our elementary schools as of August 19th. The following schools are on pace to meet their projections and do not have a change in their number of sections. Burr, Dwight, Holland Hills, Jennings, Mill Hill, and North Stratford. According to the report that you all received, you can see that at McKinley, our, in grade K, we did need to reduce by one section based on enrollment and increase by one section in grade five based on enrollment. At Osborne Hills, as well as at Riverfield, we reduced by one section based on enrollment in, I'm sorry, in grade three at both schools. At Sherman, in grade K, we actually had to increase by one section because their enrollment increased to 71. And then last but not least, at Stratfield, in grade one, we had to reduce by one section based on their enrollment of 67. So this resulted overall across the district in a reduction of two FTE because of the net reduction in sections that we had to cut in order to make sure that we met the enrollment that was necessary to have a certain number of sections at each school. Just keeping in mind that at McKinley, the enrollment caps are too short, too smaller than at the other schools. So it's 21 in grades K through two and 23 in grades three through five. Thank you.
Do board members have any questions for Dr. Parrish? Mrs. Maxon Canelli?
Thank you. And I was hoping you could just clarify, and again, there have been lots of memos around, but just since, you know, it's nice to have a live voice. If you could clarify, for the students who selected for remote learning, how are they reflected in these numbers? And so as that situation remains fluid, how is this staffing model working?
So they are included in these numbers because they are still considered a student at that particular school. Our hope, everyone's hope is that we'll be able to go back to five days a week. So we do need to make sure that there are available seats at each of the schools that they are currently enrolled at. Additionally, in the event that, you know, on the reverse side, that we do have to go full remote, they would be a part of the remote learning at that particular school. So they are included in this enrollment.
Do those parents know to which teacher they were assigned? So if you're in the Remote Learning Academy, you have a, you know, specific teacher for you grouped with students who are of your school or not. But upon your return to the school, are the parents aware of who, to whose classroom they will be returning? Or are we saying for now simply, we've held a spot, but that's part of the fluid nature of this because the teacher could change? Do I just want to clarify that's correct?
Yes, that is partially correct. There is some fluidity to that. Our hope is that we would be able to reconfigure the classes so that they are exactly as they were originally scheduled. But understanding that as we have to pull kids out in order to, because they've opted into the remote, we do have to then balance the sections across teachers. So there will be some redistribution on the element, particularly on the elementary level, in order to make sure that the classes are balanced so that the cohorts remain balanced for those students that are hybrid. So it may result in them having a different teacher when they return back to school if they are in the remote academy.
Okay, thank you. And do we have any idea, for McKinley, is the sense simply that people were holding their students out and not enrolling and waiting until next year? So that next year, we might be anticipating a huge bump there? Or is this unexplained at this point?
It's not as explained. I think that based on what I've been told historically, that McKinley, there's been, you know, an increase right at the beginning, right when school starts in terms of increasing enrollment, particularly in some of those lower grades. We haven't had a huge number of students or families that have indicated that they're planning on homeschooling, particularly in kindergarten, that came specifically just from McKinley. I think the distribution across the district is pretty, even when it comes to homeschooling.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So Dr. Parrish, just to follow up on that, there's still a chance that those McKinley numbers for kindergarten could grow based on past practice, that they're just late registrants to kindergarten?
Yeah, we had people coming in today to register. This been, you know, the last two days have been very busy. Last week was very busy because we lost some time because of the power outage. So it is potentially possible that those numbers could grow.
And in terms of holding a spot for those students who are in distance, opted for distance learning, students, just a reminder, this has been come up on just questions. Parents can opt back in to the hybrid version, or hopefully in the future, full-time instruction. There just needs to be that 10-day notice, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Back to the board, Ms. Leeper.
Hey, Dr. Parrish, this is Jennifer Leeper. Will our Distance Learning Academy be co-horted by elementary school? Or is there a possibility you could be in a cohort across schools?
Because of the numbers and the distribution across grade levels, most likely it will be across schools in order to make sure we're maximizing whatever FTE we need to assign to support those students through distance learning. What we are looking into is if it's possible to cluster schools based on their feeder pattern possibly, but combine specific groups of schools together so that even though they are part of this remote academy, they do still have a connection back to their home school.
That is actually going to be my next question, but please tell me, Mrs. Vitale, if I should hold it for the next agenda item. But I'm wondering what sort of efforts will be made to help kids sort of still feel a part of their school community?
Being that you asked it, we might as well have Dr. Parrish, or we could bring it back to Mr. Cummings to answer that?
So on the elementary level, one of the things we've talked about, we're still fleshing out all of the details around the Remote Learning Academy, is still having those students be connected through some of the support services, definitely for students that have certain hours booked into their IEPs, or those are things that we definitely will need to continue to have a connection at the school level. Regardless of if the teacher is a teacher at that school or from within another school, we plan to continue to make sure that there's some connection back to the home school between that remote teacher and the teachers that are at that student's home school so that there's that communication, there's that fluidity. In the event we do have students that, whose parents decide that they want to opt back into hybrid, or we have a whole district are able to go back to full in-person learning.
All right, thank you. You're welcome. Any other questions? Back to you, Mrs. Maxon Canelli.
Thank you. And Dr. Parrish, you just made me think, I know I saw this, I don't know at this point where, what document, if it was on a Q and A somewhere, but there had been, an idea proposed somewhere of those students who are on the remote learning and the students who are doing the remote portion of the hybrid model, that some of those science lessons or some of those social studies lessons or the specials, that there would be sharing among the teachers of that, that maybe the remote learning teacher would be composing it and the in-classroom teacher would be making use of it because that obviously would certainly contribute to the consistency of the curriculum being delivered. Is that something that's happening at all? Or was that a thought at one point and hasn't been acted on?
There was definitely discussion in reference to that. I'm not sure that that has been the model or the protocol that we've like settled on. I don't know if Dr. Zabajansik wants to speak in reference to exactly how the specials, you're speaking in reference to those particular classes, correct?
I'm talking about the aspects of the curriculum. Right now, it's reading and math and the writing component have been designated for with the classroom teacher. So for the rest of the curriculum, that there would be some consistency and some maybe really organized sharing. Those hybrid learners getting that aspect of the curriculum and having that be similar, if not delivered by the same teacher and what's going to the remote learners. So if I'm doing a science, if I'm doing a social studies lesson on Fairfield history and there's an aspect of it that's recorded, you know, that those in-classroom teachers maybe are getting that kind of assistance from whoever is assigned to the Remote Learning Academy, you know, that it really could be the same lesson.
So there will be sharing of lessons, sharing of resources, but it won't necessarily be the same teacher teaching that lesson. Yes, but there definitely will be sharing of resources. Our program directors have done a lot of work in looking at ways in which resources and lessons that have already, some of which have already been mapped out, can be shared across different schools and different learning models. But it won't necessarily be the same teacher teaching that between the remote, the 100, the always remote, and the students that are hybrid on their remote days.
Okay, and then one other thing.
I don't need to cut you off, Mrs. Maxon Canelli, but I, we're veering somewhat off of the enrollment projections. So I want to just.
Mine's back on that.
Okay, you're back on that?
Yeah. Back to the idea, Mrs. Leeper brought up the idea of the cohorting so that of their home school, those in the Remote Learning Academy, I'm going to throw my two cents in regarding, and this is something I brought up with the ECC when we split to two locations. I would hope as much as possible that if there's a mixing of schools, that we are not trying to do it according to the high school that they are feeding into or even the middle school that they're feeding into. I think this is a glorious opportunity for those cohorts to be created where students who otherwise might not be going to school together get the chance to meet other people. I think that's something that this town really could use a lot more of, and this is one small area where I think we'd be missing an opportunity if we didn't.
Thank you. That's definitely something we can consider. We hadn't, like I said, settled on specifically doing it by feeder school. That was just one of the suggestions in terms of looking at grouping schools. But I definitely like the idea of exposing our students to other cohorts and other students that they might not ever interact with in an instructional setting.
Ms. Leeper, just on the enrollment projections, because I do want to give the superintendent a chance to just discuss the school reopening before we start asking further questions.
This is Jennifer Leeper. In regard to the enrollment projections and in consideration of FTEs, will our full Distance Learning Academy students be in remote class sizes that are consistent with our class size guidelines? Or are there different caps for these remote classes?
Yes, they will be similar. So that's why we have to do the clustering of schools, because they will be similar.
Similar or in line with the class size guidelines?
Well, because we can't necessarily have two guidelines. So McKinley has its own special set that's different from the other schools. So we wouldn't be able to utilize McKinley's guidelines for all of those schools. We would use the one, the one that, the same for all of the other, the other 10 elementary schools.
That makes sense. Thank you for sharing.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on the projections? I have one last. You may not have the answer to this, and I can follow up afterwards. Are you seeing any movement from one's elementary school to another affecting these numbers? Or do some of the schools are higher than the projections, some are lower? Or is it people moving into Fairfield?
People moving in, yes.
Okay.
These are new enrollments.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on, school reopening update, Mr. Cummings?
Good evening, everyone. I'm just pulling up agenda because we've got a number of topics to go over tonight. And I think the best way to approach this, I'll do a short, very short introduction, but I'm going to have some of the executive directors talk to the specific topic. So we are on track to open on time. I will tell you that we are going to be working right to the last minute to do that. There's a number of issues that we're facing. Particularly, I think, the issue that just was being discussed around the remote learning. Essentially, if you think about it, the number of students that are involved in remote learning, both at the elementary and secondary, is quite large. It's about 10% of our student population. So the elementary school that we're creating for remote learning is around 21, 22 sections at this point. It makes it one of our larger elementary schools. The middle school, which we will get into a little bit, is section, section numbers are less. But again, we're going to be putting together a program to support the remote learners in the middle school, and then we're working on a solution for the high school as well. So we're working on different solutions and we're looking, you know, there's a number of pieces that come into that. We are meeting on a daily basis around this, and our intention is to get the details down and the staffing in place and then have conversations with the, those people who've selected remote learning as an option next week. And we're looking at the possibility of a webinar the next Wednesday or Thursday evening just specifically on the remote learning topic. And, you know, we'll be sending out more information on that once we finalize those details. So the remote learning may come up in a bunch of these different issues that we're going to address tonight. And as I said, I'm going to go through the, each of the executive directors in turn to kind of give them an update on a specific topic. Some of these are a little bit lengthier than others, but I just want to make sure these are, these are questions that we're continuing to work on. So I'm going to go back to Dr. Parrish. If you could talk both about where we are with the computer updates, as well as she's been working with community providers around childcare. So, Dr. Parrish, if you could talk to those two issues?
Yes, so in reference to the computer updates, based on the survey that went out along with, at the same time, parents made their learning model selection, there were 993 students whose parents requested devices ranging from pre-K to grade five. All secondary students should have a Chromebook because of the distribution that happened in the spring. One of the things that we are waiting on are the devices that we ordered through some of our funding sources. Unfortunately, something that's impacting not just us as a district, but nationwide, is the shortage of Chromebooks. Right now, originally, it was scheduled to be available for us the end of September. Now it's being pushed back towards the end of October, beginning of November. Right now, there are 1,345 devices available across the district. So our priority is going to be to make sure that particularly those students that are 100% remote have, and have expressed a need for a device, that we get devices in the hands of those students first and foremost, and then work our way through the rest of those students and families that are on the list who are in need of a device. So our hope is that the issue that's going on with Lenovo and that's holding up the production and distribution of laptops is resolved fairly quickly so that we're able to actually receive the order that was placed earlier this summer. And, Mr. Cummings? I'm sorry, I thought you said something.
No, I didn't, I mean.
Okay. And the second part was in reference to community supports around childcare. I believe that was the next question. So we are trying to work with some of our partners to create some childcare opportunities, working with our transportation department to figure out what's feasible. The main concern is that because of the hybrid model, our number of bus runs at the elementary level has doubled. So because they're making those runs twice, it does create difficulty in being able to free up additional buses in order to provide transportation to some of our external partners. Mr. Papa George is working with some of our partners that use our school buildings in order to ensure that they meet the requirements that are set for sides of CDC and by the state in reference to the limits on the number of students that can be in any given space, that they recognize that they can only use the spaces that they have been previously approved to use and figuring out a schedule for them to use those facilities in addition to being able to have our custodial staff go in and be able to clean those areas after that program finishes up, particularly when it comes to the before-school care program. So our hope is that very soon, our transportation, our work with transportation will be able to identify a feasible solution for our external partners so that we're able to provide additional childcare opportunities for our parents and families.
Before we move on, does anybody have any questions for Dr. Parrish on these two items? Mrs. Maxon Canelli?
One quick question. There is a turnout to be a need. Would there be any possibility of reaching out to the grade six through 12 kids to see about returning Chromebooks and using if they have other devices in the house already? Or is there something about the Chromebook especially that's needed for the, you know, things that the teachers will be doing?
The Chromebook makes it easier in terms of working with some of the Google applications. It's not, of course, the only device that you can utilize when it comes to working with the Google Classroom and some of the other applications. It's just the one that's preferred by most districts. So I think that us reaching out to families in those sixth to 12 grades would be a probable solution to try to recover devices that may not necessarily be needed at this point in time, particularly for, like I said, those families that are a part of the always-remote learning model.
Any other questions for Dr. Parrish on these items? Okay, seeing none. Back to you, Mrs. Cummings.
Okay, the next person I'm going to ask to speak is Mr. Papa George. I'm going to have, ask him to address the issues around building upgrades. And I have a, he's going to talk, and I'm going to try to present to everybody a PowerPoint that he's put together, and then also have a conversation if he would address the ventilation issues that have arisen. So, Mr. Papa George, if you want to start with the building upgrades, and I'm going to share my screen, and hopefully this will work great.
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
So just to go over some of the building updates, Mike, if he's able to do it, we'll have some pictures to go along with it. But I don't think many people at all have been at the buildings lately. So just to go over some stuff, when you first get to the buildings and the main entrances, you're going to see our new welcome signs at every door. You're also going to see a, it's kind of redundant, big signals there because it says welcome, and then right underneath it, it says no visitors. So we've added no visitor signs to each of the buildings. In addition to that, we've added signs that say, please sanitize your hands before entering the building. And we've added hand sanitizer dispensers on the outsides of every building. So we're hoping right from the start, you're being safe when you're coming in the building.
Excuse me, Angeles, is that showing now?
I do not see it.
All right, hold on a sec.
Once you enter the building, you're going to see signs throughout the building that remind people to maintain six-foot social distancing. That's a big thing. You're also going to see, and hopefully we can get some pictures up, that we've added blue lines to all the hallways, identifying either one-way or splitting the hallways and identifying direction. That's a big thing. It took a lot of tape and time. But in addition to that, you'll see, again, outside, like the nurse's office, there's signs that, oh, this might be coming up. Signs that say, please wait here so that people entering the nurse's office will wait at the door until the nurse calls them into the office area. There's also going to be some please-wait-here signs and some lines for the cafeterias at the middle and high schools so that the kids, when they're lining up to pay or select their lunches, they'll be identified where they should be standing. So it's starting to share. So in addition to that, we've added, sorry. Did I cut someone off? So in addition, we've added, we've closed off water fountains in the building. We've closed off urinals and sinks in the bathrooms to maintain social distancing in the bathrooms. We've added signs to the mirrors in front of the sinks that remind people to wash their hands for 20 seconds. We've also gone through. We've also gone through.
Oh, it's, I don't know if it's coming up.
But, in addition, we've gone through classrooms. We've removed furniture. We've set up classrooms with desks. They're all six feet apart, so each student sitting at a desk, you can draw a six-foot circle completely around and not run into another student in the class. We've done the same thing in the cafeterias at the middle and high schools, utilizing student desks instead of the tables like you're accustomed to in the cafeterias. In addition to that, we are adding swing spaces with tents outside. These will be open-air, four-side, open-air tents for use by the staff in the buildings, basically on a sign-up type basis, almost like an old computer lab would be. Staff can sign up to go out, maybe have their class out there, or, and at the elementary schools, it's a possibility for mask breaks if it's rainy or not the best day. They can still get outside with their masks off and have some break time out there. Thank you. We can't get them up. So, I mean, I think that covers most of what we've done in the building. If there's any questions about what we've done, before we move into the other section?
Questions for Mr. Papa George? Mrs. Maxine Kelly?
Just following up on the question I, just following up on the question I asked at the last meeting regarding the water dispensers at the two schools that didn't have any, and are they going to be all set?
They should be. One is already in, and I believe the other one was scheduled for today. I just have not been able to confirm that it was installed today.
And is it, and I don't know if Mr. Pitco knows this, but is, is it true that PTA Council is trying to organize an effort to increase the number of these machines in our buildings? Or was that something they talked about and nothing happened?
Mr. Pitco, I don't know if PTA Council has not been meeting, I don't.
Yeah, I, I haven't had a meeting in a while. I, I couldn't tell you, like, I think it was May, they had a brief meeting, but I didn't attend, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you.
Can I follow up on that? Just, I have not heard from PTA Council, but I have heard from individual PTAs from schools that are looking to donate one or two additional water fill stations, and we, we always welcome it. We've been following up with them, giving them the information. The only issue with that is most of these are not available until late October, early November at this point. When we were able to get the two for the last schools, we tried to order them again right afterwards, and were unable to do so.
Any other questions for Mr. Papa George? Ms. Leeper?
Hi, Jennifer Leeper. Will there be automatic hand sanitizer dispensers or just regular pumps?
Currently, they will be at the elementary, oh, all schools. The outside ones that are mounted outside the main entrances are automatic. They take batteries and they work that way. The other ones currently will be pumps, and they will be bo, individual bottles at the classroom locations. We are still on the waiting list. We've ordered them many months ago, but we're still waiting. They're starting to trickle in now. As we start to replace them, we will, as we start to get them, we will replace them, but currently they're pumps.
As you start to get the automatic ones, you'll replace the pumps in each classroom?
Outside, we're looking at outside each classroom. Basically, first, we're going to hit all the en, main entrances to the buildings. Well, we have the main entrances, but the other entrances that are highly used, and then we'll start moving into classroom areas within the buildings.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Papa George? Seeing that I have, is the state providing any assistance in securing these items?
They, they have not. We've been working with multiple vendors. I know there was a couple times we've been asked about providing PPE updates to the state to see if they could help out with that. We've done that, but we haven't really received anything back from them. We've just been working with our own vendors. Our, our vendors being ones that also supply hospitals locally, so it makes it very difficult because the state actually told vendors who deal with hospitals that the hospitals take priority. So, we, we don't take the priority on their list, but we've been able to work with other vendors that don't necessarily facilitate hospitals, so we are still able to get supplies through them.
Thank you. I'm actually a little discouraged. I know just for board chairs, one of our feedback, Drew Cave, was really trying to get some help from the state in procuring these items, so districts were not competing against each other. Understandably, hospitals do need to take priority, but our schools are, should be next in line and looking for assistance for everybody to make that happen. But thank you for your efforts on that, and I'll let you move on to the next item.
Next item is, I'm sorry, was someone going?
No, still you.
Okay. So, the next item is the HVAC and air, fresh air in the buildings. So, the reports were due back on Friday. We had some delays. We did receive some of them back. We've started to review them. We are confident that we can make the state-required adjustments to the buildings prior to September 8th. Moving forwards, we're reviewing other items in the recommendations from the contractors or the engineers, and we will prioritize those down the road. But our first priority will be to get the schools to what the state has recommended, and we are confident to get that done before September 8th.
Thank you. And those reports, when they're finalized, will be posted on the school website?
They will be. We're going to do a, we'll do a, we've asked them, the engineers, to come up with a one-page summary, which we will put up, and then we will also link the full reports there as well.
Okay, thank you. And once those are completed, we can, the board can get an update at a later date. Thank you for the update, though. Anything else for Mr. Papa George, Mr. Cummings?
No, his turn is over right now. But I'd like to have doctors have a chance to address both concerns around the music program. As, as I think everyone is aware, we've gotten more guidance from the state last week around music program. And if doctors have a chance, can give us an update on the work he's been doing with the music teachers and the administrators around that, and also, if we can talk, perhaps Dr. Parrish will join, but we have, and also Mr. Mancusi, we want to talk about how we're addressing student supports. So, let's start with music, and then we'll talk about student supports.
Great, thank you. So, I, I met with the music folks, some of them and the administrators this past week. As you know, when the new addendum came out, probably two weeks ago at this point, there, there were some different standards and guidelines that were, we were expected to follow that were outside of the typical classroom ones. And they, you know, really took some planning in order to, to get them done. This is generally a 612 or a secondary problem or issue at this point, remembering that the K5 music program is going remote for the most part, so a lot of the guidelines that the addendum addressed are for the 612 schools at this point. Particularly, there was space issues. The guidelines call for about 12 feet of distance between performers, especially those who are woodwinds or choral groups. There's other issues in terms of a teacher behind sort of a plexic glass barrier because she, she or he would be facing the audience or, or the group. We seem to have settled all of those spacing issues at this point, in terms of being able to use different areas of the building, such as the auditoriums, outside areas when possible, including the tents, and, and remembering that with the hybrid model, we have 50% capacity for the most part, so that cuts down on the student quantity as well. In terms of students, there's directionality. They all have to face in the same direction. Again, they have to be apart from each other at a, at a pretty significant distance. Schedules, 612 in the hybrid model are A B, A B, so Monday, Thursday group, and Tuesday, Friday group. We are working with the music department on seeing how those remote days can be used for either individual lessons or small group lessons for students to, that they would necessarily be missing when they had a full class period. The state guidelines also call for 30 minutes on, 20 minutes off, in some of our periods being 80 minutes or more. The teachers are able to implement a 30-minute on, 20-minute off, which is really when the air is supposed to be recycled through the system, and then they can begin the performance again with that. Other smaller issues that we're able to look at are things like clock coverings for the instruments, and microphones and speakers for the teachers, especially if they plan on using outdoor areas or tents or bigger areas that aren't currently equipped with, with that, with, with, with that equipment. So, music program still going to happen, obviously, with some of the stuff that I was, that I spoke about before, so there are some accommodations we have to make for that, but we are going to move forward with the typical program that we have.
Any questions for the board? Ms. Maxine Kelly?
Just in terms of music in the middle schools, what's happening with the pull-out lessons?
Sure. So, you know, we're still working on the tip, the actual schedule for it. So, the pull-out lessons, some of them can happen during the time when the students are in, if you're in a Monday, Thursday, or a Tuesday, Friday, for example, but obviously that's not enough time in totality. So, the teachers did put together some schedules where they would be able to meet on remote days as well while they are in school and have some time in their schedules, obviously, when we build them, to do synchronous learning through a Google Meet.
Because I, I would think there'd be some concern that those middle school students that are only getting to see those T, assuming that they're getting pulled out of one of their other core classes, that they're only getting to see those teachers twice a week, and now they're getting pulled out of that. I assume that they can opt out of those lessons and that there's no impact on them, or, obviously, I'm sure that the music teachers will be as creative as possible in keeping the, the music program as robust as possible, but I certainly understand if parents, for those two days a week, want their kids to stay in their academic classes. So, I don't know if there's any, what the thinking is around this right now.
Sure. We, you know, we obviously want to maximize our time, and the music teachers want to maximize their time, as you indicated, with their music lessons, obviously to keep the program as great as it is, and also to keep the continuity of it between the articulation of middle school and high school, which is another factor. There have been questions, to your point, about whether or not a, a parent can opt for removal of some of that, if necessary, to, to go back to those classes. So, it's something we're looking at.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
So, I'd like to talk the broader topic of student supports, and this has a number of variations. I know that we can talk about this from an SRBI perspective, if that helps, in kind of framing it around students who need additional supports in reading or math, as well as students in special education, and any updates we have with that. Before we do that, I just want to apologize for the lack of the PowerPoint, and just to let everybody know that we will be posting it online tomorrow to make sure everybody is able to see it, so. But I don't know, doctors have a chance, would you mind starting with just kind of where we are in our discussions with student supports? The idea of how we're going to support students both within school, students who are in the hybrid model when they're not necessarily, when they're not in school and they're home, and also the idea of what we're kind of even looking at right now with remote?
So, we have a number of supports built into the, to the hybrid model for students. Somebody mentioned before, the majority of the day, especially for the elementary students, is, you know, literacy and numeracy and social-emotional learning to begin the day. With that being said, we have built in a block, and each of the principals are building in blocks for each of the grade levels for the hybrid portion of the day, where both acceleration and remediation and some independent practice can happen as well, outside of, obviously, the specials, the science and social studies block, number corner, and so forth. There's a number of individuals in the building who are going to support this, the academic stuff at the elementary level, and, and also to the extent at the secondary level, through the literacy specialists and, and the MSTs, who can work with small groups and individual students as necessary, that doesn't preclude them, obviously, from working within the school day as well when students are on campus and in person. And those are really the supports that happen. I'll, you know, I'll let Mr. Mancusi talk about the special education supports that he, he has built in. Those are more of the general ed supports and the, obviously, tier-one differentiation and tiers two and three additional support within the general education program. In terms of remote, I don't know if, Mr. Cummings, you want me to continue, or you want to just jump on supports for specialized first?
No, you keep going. Don't want Mr. Mancusi jumping.
Okay. So, for full remote, so these are kids whose parents have opted them for, to, to not come to school and to be on a digital platform and with the teacher in our academy. We are looking at several avenues here as well, including the stuff I just said, so, you know, you know, replicating some of those practices from the hybrid model to the remote, but in addition, keeping the standards for those who have connections to the school to, to continue their interventions with those students or small groups of students as well. You know, we're still in the planning stages of this. There's still things that need to be fleshed out with it, obviously, but we know that many of our support staff have created good relationships with students over the course of the years, and we don't want to remove a lot of those relationships simply because the, they're unable to come to school for a variety of reasons. So, we're looking at building those into the remote, the fully-remote students' day as well, so that there is connection back to the school that is their homeschool.
Any questions? Ms. Jacobson?
Hi, Jen Jacobson. Two quick questions, and this is either Mr. Cummings or whoever wants to answer it. Has the state, I know we were waiting on guidance from the state around remote learning in terms of some consistent expectations between districts. Have, have we received anything like that at this point yet? I haven't seen it, so I just wanted to make sure that that hasn't come in yet.
No, we have not. The state's expectations for remote learning are really not well-defined at this point.
Okay, thank you. And then the other question I have is about, not necessarily our remote days or our distance learners, but for our kids who go into quarantine, either because they have an issue personally or because the class may be dismissed as we move forward, just what the supports are going to be. I know we've determined that they will stay with their teacher and with their class. We're not going to be sending them off anywhere at this point anymore, so that's good. But how will we make sure that they're keeping up? Will they be meeting with their teacher? Will they be zooming into the class? Just how are those, I mean, it's two weeks a time, so that's significant. So, I just want to have an understanding of what that's going to look like for them.
I will, I will attempt to answer this and just say that some of this is still in progress. They are going to stay with their teacher. They are going to stay with their class. There will be some variation by, by level. You know, I think this is going to be, well, there's, there's a couple scenarios. The student who has to go into quarantine as an individual, and the student has to go into quarantine as part of the class. That's actually the probably easier issue, because if the class itself, if the, and let's say it's a morning cohort at elementary or a middle school class, if the teacher's in, in quarantine as well, and, and well enough to teach, they will continue to teach the class, and everybody will be in remote learning essentially for that two-week period. The student who individually has to go into quarantine, we are going to look to continue to involve them in the, in the classroom, the Google Classroom, they'll get the assignments and everything from the teacher, and then we're going to have to look at some type of additional support structure. So, so the student has access to support to supplement what they're not getting when they're getting the one-on-one, or they're, they're in, in person with the teacher, if that makes sense. So, there's going to have to be a kind of a combination of both the support when they're already on a scheduled hybrid or distance learning, and then support when they're in class, they should be in class and not able to be in class. So, it's going to be a combination of both continued classroom support as well as some additional support.
Okay, thank you. So, just to clarify, whatever's happening in class will be available on Google Classroom, number one. Any lessons, homework, et cetera.
That's correct.
Pages that you need to read, whatnot. And then we will be, some sort of live. And then, we will be making some sort of live time for questions to get clarified, time for them to meet either those off-hours or whatnot where, "I didn't understand that." Okay, so that's good. All right, so I just, I just wanted to get some clarity around how that was going to look, because at the high school level, it doesn't really work the same way. Your whole chemistry class could be quarantined, but now you're also missing your math, you're missing your, you're missing your everything. So, it's really eight, up to eight classes that you're going to need to keep up with on your own. So, that gets tricky, and that's going to be difficult. So, I hope that we'll be implementing strong supports there. So, thank you for that update.
Ms. McEnally?
Just one quick question. In terms of supports, if you're in the Remote Learning Academy, obviously, there's the teacher to contact, but if you feel the need for something bigger, which administrator are you contacting?
When you say something bigger, like if you need additional support?
Right. Additional supports have higher-level questions, that goes beyond the teacher. I mean, I can't imagine that every teacher in that remote, if the remote learning teacher in the first grade has students there from five different elementary schools, I assume that that teacher is not answering to five different administrators, who's in charge of the Remote Learning Academy.
That's correct. We are going to be hiring somebody to run the Remote Learning Academy, because it is, becomes essentially, like, given the number of students in it, I think I was saying earlier on the enrollment report, it's one of our larger elementary schools at this point. And we are thinking that we would include with it kind of a K-8 model, if you think about it, because the middle school has enough sections to really justify a similar approach. Although not anything, yep.
Any other questions from board members? Okay, moving on.
I was wondering if Mr. Mancusi wants to talk to about special education supports here, and anything that's new since we last had this discussion with the board.
Sure. Good evening, everyone, and buddy. Rob Mancusi, Executive Director of Special Education. There's several to discuss regarding special education student support, so broken it into three areas, and we'll just take it one area by a time at a time. First, there is an expectation across special education in an effort to increase consistency of service delivery across the department, whether students are in remote or in hybrid or in live, in-person, that a minimum of 50% of student services are delivered live, whether that's in-person, if they're in the hybrid model, or live video instruction if they're in the remote model. There is also, obviously, a huge emphasis on, you know, re-engaging students and families and on students' social-emotional wellbeing. So, we will be implementing or completing a universal screening on all our students to determine the degree of trauma that students and families experience during this extended closure, and then we will be developing individualized intervention plans to re-engage and work with students. Staffing is another thing we are looking at. Since school was closed and all mandated special education timelines were paused on September 8th, we will, again, our mandated timelines will begin counting again. So, we have a number of initial referrals that we still need to complete, that we're in the process, as well as several pre-yearly evaluations that were not completed by their due dates due to the closure. So, we're looking at the potential of additional school psych slash social work staff to meet the testing needs and the mental health needs of our students, and as well as the testing loads of speech pathologists. Additionally, you know, we're looking at increasing live, in-person learning for our students with disabilities and prioritizing what the state calls students with high needs. Students with high needs is clearly defined in Addendum III on page one. They're students who, if districts are, don't have programs like we do in district, often have to outplace them and then approve private special education program. There's students who require one-to-one or one-to-two assistance throughout the day, students who have significant communication deficits, students who need assistance with feeding and toileting and other, you know, personal care skills. So, we are offering full-in-day, live, five-days-a-week programming for our CLC students at this time to start the year. Additionally, we are working with our staff and our administrators on identifying other students and look-for's to identify other students who are in need of additional support. On top of that, you know, special ed education is an individualized program. So, on a case-by-case basis, we are, you know, getting emails from parents, and we're responding, you know, to try to work through, you know, each individual case-by-case individually. That is a brief update. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Do the board have any questions from Ms. Mancusi? Ms. McEnally?
Hi, fine, originally. I, it's not so much of a question, it's just really a comment. And I know that you just said it, and I just want to reiterate it. So important that it not just be limited to our CLC students, and that those children who are not in CLCs who have high needs really do get considered for five-day support as well, because, you know, they could use it just as much as CLC students. So, just throwing that out there.
Point well taken.
Any other questions? Okay, back to you, Mr. Cummings.
All right. I'd like to, Ms. DC, to just give us an update on staffing, and then we'll have Ms. Monsel talk about transportation.
Good evening, everyone. It's Colleen DC, I'm the Executive Director of Personal and Legal Services. Since Friday, my office has received 196 different requests for meetings to discuss accommodations for staff as we return to school. The main areas for those meetings have been an underlying disability or health issue on the part of the staff member. Some staff members have requested a meeting because they live with someone in their household, it might be a spouse, an elderly parent, or their child who has an underlying medical disability that would make that staff member apprehensive about returning to school. And then, the other major issue that has been, one of the factors, has been an inability for people to find adequate childcare during the time that their district, who might, they might live in Fairfield, then have young children who are in our own hybrid program, where they're only going to school for half a day, or they might be in one of our neighboring districts that's on a totally different hybrid program, that has made it difficult to, for them to find childcare. And then, and then some of our staff members live in places like New Haven, where they've gone entirely distance, and are now facing the very real problem of trying to find five-day-a-week childcare for their split child as we approach, rapidly approach the beginning of the school year. So, we've taken very nearly 200 meetings. I finished up meeting number 80 this afternoon. I have several more to do tomorrow, myself, and we are working on sorting out exactly who does qualify for an ADA accommodation and what that accommodation might be. And for many of our staff members, we will be able to place them in a remote teaching assignment, and in that case, that would, that would resolve many of their issues around returning to work. However, for some of them, we will not be able to place them in a remote learning assignment just by virtue of the fact that the driver for this is going to be the operational needs of the district, and what the students who are in remote learning are requiring in terms of instruction. So, there will be some staff members who have requested a remote assignment and will not be able to receive that change in staffing assignment for the start of the school year. So, we're working on sorting out, if those people are returning to their original assignment that they would have been in if not for the pandemic, then what accommodations will those staff members need in order to return as safely as possible and compliant with their physician's recommendations to the school year? I'm happy to take any questions on this topic.
Any questions for Ms. DC? Ms. McEnally?
Small question and then large question. Small question, when you say if we're able to fulfill with a remote learning assignment, is that in the Remote Learning Academy, or might that be something different?
It could be in the Remote Learning Academy, or it could be something like a teacher who is going to be supporting students who are engaged in the hybrid plan, however, it's the portion of the hybrid plan in which they're engaged in remote learning. So, it could be either of those iterations at this point, and that is, the work that we are going to be doing over the next few days in central office is hammering out exactly what those details look like.
So, since that's not a staffing position we budgeted for, where does that leave us?
Great question. The plan right now for us, and this is a function more than anything else of the fact that we have committed to recruiting students to the classroom from which they, is their homeschool and their home classroom, is going to be that we're going to need to find long-term substitute teachers to fill in in the physical classroom. The teacher who, if we're thinking of like a third-grade teacher, they are placed out to take a class in the remote academy, they will need a long-term sub to be in their place back in their homeschool.
Okay. And are we looking like that when we open on day one, we might have, now, not elementary school, but whether middle school specials or in the high school, are we worried about being able to stack them?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Ms. Picko?
Hi, Tricia Picko. Ms. DC, my question is for you, and it's just to clarify something for me. Is it my understanding that there's, I don't know if it's a state law or what it is, that a substitute can only be in one classroom for 40 days?
A substitute is not certified. Can only be in one classroom for 40 days. It's a certification issue.
Thank you.
Any other questions from Ms. DC? Okay, same then. Back to Mr. Cummings.
All right. And Ms. Monsel, can you give us an update on transportation, please?
Sure, Doreen Monsel. Transportation Department is working very, very hard on routing by cohorts now. We are meeting with first student on a regular basis, and we have, buses will be disinfected daily, and wiped down in, on high-traffic areas, will be wiped down between runs. There will be assigned seats, and we're working on, once the routing gets completed, as the opening, reopening plan states, the buses will be loaded from the back moving forward. So, we're working on having, you know, identifying a child seat as maybe, you know, five seat, and marking the bus so that they'll know what, what seat, five seat is. Bus monitors, we are looking for bus monitors for pre- and elementary, at least for the beginning of the year, and we are having a very, very difficult time with that. We have posted for the position, we've reached out to the parent group, and we, we are not, we're not in a position yet where we have any idea where we're going to get these bus monitors from. That's a real issue. I think that's it.
Ms. Jacobson? I don't know if we have this information available now or not, but do we have an idea of those who are eligible for the bus who opted out, or said they would be willing to drive on the Cert Return Survey, what those numbers came back as?
I do have them, but I don't remember off the top of my head what they are. We have just been so laser-focused on what has to be done with the children that are requested transportation.
Okay. And even if people indicated on that survey that they were going to be taking their own children and wouldn't be utilizing the bus, just to be clear, even if you selected that option, you are still being assigned a bus seat on a bus, correct?
Could you say that again?
For the people who opted out of taking a bus, they are still being given a seat on the bus.
They're not being, the bus is not being routed to include them, and an assigned, and a seat assigned to them. That doesn't mean that they can't change their minds and be then put on the bus, but no, the buses, they're not being included in the routing and seat assignments right now.
Okay. That's good for everyone to know. So, if you opted out of the bus, you don't have a seat unless you change your mind and want to have a seat.
And then, we need some notice to be able to route the bus and get a seat assigned.
Is that the same 10 days, Mr. Cummings, or who, is it the same 10 days? Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Leeper?
Hi, Jennifer Leeper. Ms. Monsel, this is an out-of-the-box consideration, but given you're having such a hard time finding bus monitors, have you considered reaching out to PTAs for parent volunteers? And I'm sure there are things bus monitors would have to do. I don't know if background checks is a part of that or whatever, but seeing if there are any parents who would volunteer to serve in those roles, even if we could pick up a few that way, it might be meaningful.
I'll certainly check into that.
Ms. Leeper, just to piggyback that, I think that if you're, obviously, if it's by cohort, I would think that ideally, if we could get a parent that is part of that cohort, that would be even better. But, good suggestion, Ms. Leeper, thank you. Any other questions from the board about transportation? Ms. Jacobson?
And this might be an interesting question, maybe, for Colleen, but is a bus monitor not an available staff assignment?
It is, it is an available staff assignment, and that is something that we are considering, especially with our parent professionals. I think the major hesitation in requesting and/or requiring that of our staff is that if we have parent professionals who are working in the building, the priority is to have them in the building, and they have a role that is essential there. So, I think it's, that's less of an issue with the before and after-school runs, but it's, in that midday run, if the parents are supposed to be doing something else, and they also need to take a lunch at some point, that is where it becomes a bit more problematic with scheduling.
Okay, great. Just wanted to clarify why that was the case. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions about transportation? Ms. Monsel, just, if you could get the numbers to the board for those people who opted on the survey, indicated they were going to opt out for transportation, that would be just helpful for us to have. And just a suggestion, I think a video, you know, I saw Ferkel Woods do the video of just welcome to school, and kind of did a little visual of what the return to school was going to look like. Maybe something for the bus would also be helpful, just in terms of what the expectation is for safety protocols, waiting on the bus stop, should kids be wearing masks, you know, you're going to go to your assigned seat, this is how you're going to get on the bus, this is how you're going to get off the bus, just so there's an expectation there before school starts. Just a suggestion, do with it what you will, but.
No questions, thank you.
Okay. Seeing no more questions about transportation, back to you, Mr. Cummings.
Sorry, finding the right button there. That concludes our update at this point. As I said, we're, we're, we're working on every front at this point to resolve issues. we're, we're, we're working on every front at this point to resolve issues. We've got a lot actually done. Sometimes it's tough to forget those things that are already been completed, but we will be ready. The priority right now is finalizing the pieces around the hybrid, finalizing the pieces around the staffing, and then as a result, determining what the remote learning structures will really look like as we put that program together over the next week. Our teachers report on Monday, excuse me, on Friday, and we, Mr. McCusie has arranged, we're, we're very concerned about our staff's social, emotional well-being, returning to work after being apart for so long, knowing that they've missed their colleagues, knowing that they've missed their kids, knowing that they have a lot of concerns coming back to work. So Mr. McCusie has worked to support them with some, I don't know, Mr. McCusie, how would you describe it? I had a lost fight memory for words, and it's probably the hour.
Yeah, we're doing some, some self-care work with, with staff, with one of, we're doing a two-hour presentation similar to what the administrators had with, with our consultants who oversee implementation of our DBT program. We're lucky in Fairfield that we have contact with a lot of great and access to a lot of great mental health professionals. And I also want to thank Mrs. Rattelli, who has also referred or given me a name of an excellent mental health trauma expert who we've reached out to and spoke to about, you know, doing some work together in the future. So on Friday, ECC and Elementary will go from 10 to 12. They'll have their presentation, and it's interactive, so there'll be, it's a Q and A type of thing. And then middle school and high school will go from 12:30 to 2:30.
And that's all virtual in the sense that they're accessing together an online presentation?
Yes, that's going to be a Zoom presentation.
Thank you.
Mr. Cummings, can you just give us a little more detail of what other professional development staff will be doing or training on those first few days that they return back to school?
Yes. So the other part of what we're doing, it's essentially two major components. One is the safety and well-being part of it, which is not only, as Ms. McCusie said, for the self-care pieces, but also getting ready for the students' return, training in the social distancing, the PPE. Our nurses will be working with each of the teachers at the school sites to review the safety practices and protocols. The schools will also be kind of working through those things with staff. As people know, we're going to be doing, bringing in the cohorts at all levels to have them experience briefly how the day works, and it's really for us to see how the building fills with kids. How do we, how does the arrival and dismissal procedures work? How do we work in the hallways? Familiarizing both the students with the new expectations for the school year before they actually start on the eighth, but also getting, having staff take a look at how, as I said, the building fills up and how adjustments might be needed to be made to the plans we have in place. We want to, the language, the expression perhaps is like a shakedown cruise, essentially just see how this works. And there'll be time in the, for the staff to review those, that work, and then make adjustments for the Labor Day weekend. And then the other major part is really the professional learning. There's going to be work at the schools, as there is at the beginning of every year, around what the school improvement plans are, familiarity with that, and then our curriculum, program directors will be working with their departments, the curriculum liaisons will be working with their departments, the work that was done this summer in July around curriculum revision, instructional work, that will be provided to all the teachers, really as a departure point. There's so much work was done, we're not going to sufficiently cover it, but it really begins the conversation with the, with the teachers around the work going forward and how to best teach in the, in a hybrid model or a remote learning model.
Any questions for Mr. Cummings? And just closing remarks. Again, I'd like to thank all the executive directors for your work this summer. I know that it's been, you've been working tirelessly on the weekends and at night, and I appreciate that. To any teachers that might be calling in, I appreciate the work that you have been doing and the, the mental energy that you are putting in to be preparing to return to school. I understand the, the anxiety surrounding it, and I just want you to know that we're going to keep on working to just put the safety precautions in place and do all that we can to make the return to school joyous. And I think that right now, that word may not, people may not be feeling it, and I've been thinking a lot about it, just thinking about convocation last year and Mr. Cummings' speech to staff and talking about a cup of joy. And I know that we've heard a lot of that they're still planning to be done, there's still work to be done, and quite honestly, I think that we're going to be hearing those words throughout the rest, throughout the school year, because we're going to be learning new things and the situation's going to change. But I do believe that for those, though, though at that moment, when the teacher and a student is back together, there will be joy. And I hope that that joy, you know, gives energy for the work going forward. And maybe that's a little bit sappy, and maybe I'm being overly optimistic on that, but, you know, I think that we just need to, to keep a focus on all the good work that's being done and all the good people that are doing the work that are here tonight and are listening in. So, so thank you. And we're going to move on to new business, the adoption of the 2020-2021 student calendar. Removing half-day PD, PD day on September 22nd. That the Board of Education adopt the 2020-2021 student calendar as enclosed. Good motion, this is Max McInally, second in bar, Mr. Asa. Mr. Cummings, do you want to just give us a background on why this change is being suggested?
Yes, thank you. We're making the change. We're aware of quite a number of the concerns that parents have with the childcare issues and the scheduling that's happened, and so much of it has been unavoidably last minute. So we, we have a logistical issue with having a half-day, how that's going to impact the balance of the cohorts in the first month of the school year, at really every level. And so the, you know, we looked at this 100 different ways, and I finally said, you know, let's just, let's just cancel this at the, for the first month of September. Only one month at a time, knowing that the parent conferences are coming up in October, and we're going to need a different solution for that if we're still in a hybrid model at that point. But this was just something that we can take off the plate right now and just not have to deal with, with so many other things that we have to deal with.
Okay, thank you. Do the board have any questions? Okay. Seeing none, we'll take it to the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Sent in? Motion pass is nine zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, we have a number of policies, policies for a first read. This is Max McInally. I will let you talk us through this.
Um, oh, I'm, I'm never sure to agree to talk it through, because this is obviously a tremendous number of them here. What I want, do want to explain for everyone is that they fall into two categories, and they're pretty clearly labeled. You'll see that C19, 1, 2, 3, those are clearly marked as new policies. They, they're no revision, they're brand-new as is. And then the next set of policies are ones where they are amendments to existing policy. The plan will be on the website for all of the policy wonks among us who like to look these up, that there will be a separate COVID-related policy impact section, and then also within the body where you would normally find them, so that you can see that what was identified as C19-4, that's related to COVID, but it's also known to us as 3424.2, which is dealing with the green cleaning program. The amendment, the, the language that exists only for the time of the COVID pandemic is clearly highlighted in yellow, so that you can see, and at the moment, we are out of this, those will cease to exist. And so there's a whole bunch of them here. I will make one correction. If you could please take a look at C19.8, 513 attendance, that should not have been included. Policy, the policy committee is still working on that policy, so please just ignore that, but everything else will be up for a vote next meeting. If you have any questions now, happy to take them. Otherwise, if you could please send them to me, it would be helpful in advance of the next meeting.
Do any board members have any questions for Mrs. McInally? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on. Approval of minutes, the Board of Education approved the following minutes, June 23rd, 2020 special and regular meeting minutes, July 7th, 2020 special meeting minutes, July 14th, 2020 special meeting minutes for 6:30 PM and 7:30 PM, August 11th, 2020 special meeting minutes for 7:30 PM. Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Ms. Picko, any discussion, questions, comments? Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, I just wanted to let board members know in case anyone was wondering, that we are missing two executive session minutes, the August 10th and the executive session we had on August 11th. Those just slipped through the cracks on my part, but Mrs. Brown has them now, and they will be on our next agenda. So just wanted to let you know.
Thank you, Mrs. Gerber. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? Sent in? Seeing none, motion pass is nine zero. Okay, Mr. Cummings, back to you for superintendent's report? Yep, I need to unmute you.
There we go.
I was unmuted.
So, my apologies. I'm going to have Mr. Papa George update on summer work projects, because, you know, it can often be forgotten, and all we're doing to get ready for the school year, given the unique circumstances of it, other things still go on as in the course of a normal year. So, Mr. Papa George, did you see the summer work projects that have been in process?
Yes. Real, real basically, we got, you have the sheets as part of your packet, but currently we have 10 projects completed. We have 13 projects that are in progress and expect to complete just prior to or just after the start of school. Anything that will start, finish after the start of school, the principals are aware of and know what expectations will be during that time. In addition, we also have seven projects that we've placed on hold at this point because of the Corona, coronavirus, and just difficulty getting supplies, materials, and also funding. We're unsure of what we're going to be doing, so we've placed them on hold. And then lastly, we have one project which we've postponed at this point, because we don't at this point see a need to proceed with it. So we've held that one, and that would be the Fairfield-Ledlow High School scoreboard that came up several times, but it has been working since we were able to make some repairs to it. A lot of the projects that we did do are flooring projects, fencing projects. We were able to get the batting cages in for the baseball and softball fields at both high schools. Those are in progress and should be wrapping up hopefully sooner than later, but definitely before the baseball and softball seasons. Other projects that we had go on were, just looking through the list for some highlights, mostly projects, most of the projects were entrance ways and main office flooring, flooring in gym areas, so a lot of flooring projects, team room projects, air conditioning or ventilation, I shouldn't say air conditioner, I say air scrubbers, and a wood shop at Tomlinson was able to take place. So we have been moving, despite everything, all the setbacks and the improvements to the buildings for Corona, we've also been moving forwards with the projects that were planned to happen and some additional projects with funding that was recognized at the end of last year.
Do board members have any questions for Mr. Papa George? Ms. McInally?
Okay, I don't know how I could possibly have missed this, but could you explain on page two, the baseball field dugout for Fairfield Ward?
Fairfield Ward will be getting a baseball field dugout. Fairfield Ward softball will also be getting a dugout, and Fairfield Ledlow softball will be getting a dugout. It was a, it was a large talk about at the budget time last year. It was added to the one, two, and three wish list to the schools, and when funding was available at the end of last year, it was something we identified and were able to move forwards with.
I am delighted to hear this. Did we end up going with the mesh on the dugout or that aluminum stuff?
Well, we went, went with a black, black vinyl fencing with a, it's got a aluminum type roof, and it's got a windscreen on the backside and the two sides, and the windscreens on the backside were able to be custom to the logos of each team.
Fantastic. I am delighted to hear it. Thank you.
Ms. Jacobson? Hi, Jen Jacobson. The projects that are on hold, I heard you say that some of that was because of materials and also partly in because of, is that, is this, some of this has to do with the deficit?
Yes, the unknown with the costs related to COVID.
Okay. So if some of these projects are on hold, meaning they will, you're anticipating them being able to get done this year, or do you feel that we're looking at a deferral on the waterfall?
We, we are hopeful that we will be able to get them through this year. If not, then it would be, it wouldn't, the waterfall is the capital and non-recurring, so these are budgeted projects.
Right.
So we would, we would have to look at the next year's budget and see what was scheduled for next year and what can be shifted around to re-accommodate these, whatever could not be done this year. We wouldn't just drop the projects.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Any other questions about summer work? I have a question, and it's not on this, but just, I drove past Roger Ledlow, and I see solar going up in the back. Are those projects complete?
They are not completed. They're on their way to be completed. Roger Ledlow and Burr is also one of the ones on its way. The panels are up. I have not been by Burr lately, but I know Roger Ledlow, the panels are up and being wired, so there's no indication that that would not be up and running.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to COVID-related expenses.
Well, for COVID expenses, we can only be talking about Ms. Munsell. So Ms. Munsell, can you talk about this spreadsheet?
Absolutely. I'm going to try to share the document and hope it's successful.
Ms. Munsell, you need to give Mr. Cummings some...
Okay, here we go.
I'm not worthy.
So this spreadsheet is, the, it includes actual encumbered or expended expenses and potential. So this first column here, I know, I'm not so good that I can, can direct it or point to it, but this first column of text is the, the different departments and a descriptor of what the expenses are. This spreadsheet is, is a little different than normal. It runs, it adds from right to left. So this first column is the total potential expenses as of 8/21. The second column is actual or encumbered, and the third column is potential. These items have not been incurred yet. They've just been items that we've identified and estimated as a potential expense, and then there's notes to give some further description on it. So going in column three, go down that column, the first item on line one is the midday runs for the middle school. So that's an additional expense. This is net of the savings from the secondary schools not running on Wednesdays, and this is for the three months, for a three-month period from September through the end of November. Then the bus monitors, this was priced out for one month to, you know, just get kids used to the idea. It would have to last longer now than for the pre-K, now that we've got further guidance. It would have to last longer now then for the pre-K now that we've got further guidance that monitors need to buckle in the pre-K. This is based on the first student rate. There's, you know, we have 20 special ed monitors available, but special ed would be their first task, and if, if they aren't needed for some reason, then that's, that's, there's some options there, but that's about it, this is 20 people there. The disinfecting of the buses for first student, the cost for the first three months is the 16, 809, and then ECSs are out-of-district transportation, their disinfectant rate is the 26, 820. So, that, here's the total for transportation of potential of 421. Moving down, some assistance for HR for, to do normal staffing needs, while Colleen is concentrating on, on all this other staffing issues was put in there. Instruction, there's some administration of the remote learning for the entire fiscal year. The 21 long-term subs for elementary remote learning. Because of having to spread out for lunch at the middle school, it was identified that we would need 12 lunch aids. So, that's the total potential cost for instruction of 572. Technology, I won't go over this much because there's a separate technology spreadsheet that gives more details, but these are potential costs. And then the largest area is obviously the maintenance. This first item is tables and chairs to spread out for secondary lunch. Overtime for the custodians just for the beginning of the opening of school. A custodial temp service, this is, this is for the entire year, so this is worst-case scenario. Police department, additional cost for traffic control because of the parent transportation that's gonna happen. HVAC filters, this is for the additional, this is above and beyond the normal filter maintenance that maintenance does to meet the COVID requirement. Hand sanitizer, now this is a projected, or an estimated cost for a, number for additional expenses. We did purchase hand sanitizer and all kinds of other PPE last year, but this is just, you know, an estimate for the remainder of the year. Masks, N95 masks, gloves, disposable gowns, wipes. I broke all of these out as potential expenses just so that you would see the details. But for this, for instance, where, this column where we've already purchased custodial supplies, I just summarized here what that was, hand sanitizer, disinfectant, cleaning supply. So, for maintenance alone, the potential is 1.8 million, so for a total, almost 3.3 million on potential COVID expenses. So, I'm gonna move back up to column two, which is what we've already incurred. There's some instructional supplies, we bought some Ziploc bags to, to house supplies for children with their name on it so that they're kept completely separate, and goggles because there's no sharing of that kind of equipment. Again, here's technology expenses that are outlined in the, in the other spreadsheet, and maintenance, the items that we've already encumbered or actually bought. Their, that total is the 343, for a total of 5, 615. And these are color-coded, and I'll tie them back to the financial statement that we'll look at. So, then column three, column one is the total potential by department, moving down for a total of 3.9 million. Now, we, this non-lapsing number, the 1,777, the Board of, in the MOU with the Board of Finance, they authorized a $3.3 million deposit into non-lapsing. If you remember on the, in May, when we did the budget adjustments, 1.522 million was moved from the budget, the BOE budget, into non-lapsing. So, the 3.3 million less the 1.522 is where I got the 1.77. The max that we can deposit into the non-lapsing is 3.633. So, there's an additional 333 and change that would require Board of Finance approval. So, we just backed out the amount that we, we've already got agreement on. ESER is the elementary and secondary school emergency relief. We were awarded 231,000, so I backed that out of the total potential. And then we were also just notified of the, they're calling it the CRF, the Coronavirus Relief Fund from the state, that's 712,000. So, that leaves us with a potential deficit of the 1.81. So, I think that's, that's the overview of this document. Any questions on this before I move on to the other?
Sorry, I was, Mrs. Gerber?
Oh, yeah, hi. So, I guess I just, I wanted to get back to the busing. So, so potentially, this number, the 314 could be a lot higher, correct? Because this is only for three months.
Correct.
So, there'd be seven additional months, like potentially. I mean, obviously, that's worst-case scenario, but, you know, we, in fact, were in this for the entire 2021 school year, that would be another, and I, math isn't my strong suit, but about like over $700,000 more on top of the 314.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Jacobson, sorry, I'm like, the screen being shared, I'm not getting you in the grid view.
Hi, Jen Jacobson, thank you. In similar vein, I had a question about, some things on this chart, Mrs. Muncell, are estimated on an annual basis, and some are for a few months. So, just an overall question to begin with was why that was the case rather than annualizing all the items?
I, I just did for the first few months figuring we would either be in hybrid or in-person instruction. Mr. Papa George took another avenue and chose to price it out for the entire year. Because if we were either in hybrid or in-person, there's a, the likelihood of that service still being required.
Right, okay. So, Mrs. Gerber's question answered, my first question was about the hybrid, the elementary midday runs being for only three months going through 1130, I believe, 20? So, again, that could, is there a possibility, and if that's for Mr. Cummings, that we could just be in hybrid for the whole year? Or were you thinking that we would either be full remote or full in-person by that time?
I'm not capable of making that prediction. I, you know, I think too, what Ms. Muncell said, we were trying to think, I know she was trying to think of the next three months, because the only predictions we're kind of, we're getting from anybody really is that if we are going to be considering a return to full-time remote for everybody, it might be around the beginning of Thanksgiving, November, the beginning, around Thanksgiving. But, like so many things right now, I don't know.
Okay.
Just, Mrs. Jacobson, I think just to piggyback, you know, we're still moving forward with reevaluating where we are on September 25th. So, that may change some of these numbers in the other direction. If we return to school or bring more students into the building, that might also change the numbers.
Right, okay. And then, I had another question. The transportation too, and this might not be for tonight, it might be for once we have a better idea going forward, but this 421 estimate, that's in addition to our regular budgeted amount for transportation of the 9.581 million-ish, right? So, that's in addition to that?
Yes, but I'm not sure how this impacts the normal transportation grid.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I understand. I, I think that, you know, the transportation budget is just a, it's a large number, and given, depending on how things flow throughout the year, I think it would be a good idea to kind of think about how that money, you know, is gonna be utilized, so to speak, especially if we're facing a deficit. So, that's just a comment that I wanted to say on that. So, not for tonight, but if we, you know, as we move forward, that's something for us to think about. Oh, and then the other thing I wanted to say is, I don't know if this is for the chair or not, but are we, have we communicated this with the Board of Finance? Or maybe the Board of Finance liaison wants to jump in about the additional funds that to take us to the 2% in the lapsing account? And do we know if we're on their agenda in order to get that approval or seek that approval?
Ms. Muncell, actually, we just asked the Board of Finance today just to kind of give our year-end numbers. I have not spoken to Mr. Brown, but the original conversation was that we would be reviewing this on their September agenda.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Peterson, I don't know if you have any additional information, or Ms. Muncell?
No, that was also my understanding, is that we would reconvene with them at the end of summer.
Okay, awesome, thank you. And then also, Mr. Cummings, the last question I have is on the relief funds that we were awarded. I know back in June, our estimate for the CFR funds, the relief funds, was a little bit higher, it was around 843, but yet it came in around 712. Was there any, like, explanation to superintendent's on like, how that changed?
No, there was.
It's got like a number.
No, we haven't gotten any explanation of that. We got a, this email came, I believe, on Friday afternoon with just a table with the numbers, and we've got no further explanation at this point.
Yeah, 'cause I know, I know on the town side, what we had submitted was more about 843 just for the local piece, so I'm really just curious if, that's, it's $160,000. I mean, you know, that's, that's, especially with if we're looking at a deficit, you know, that's a couple of our projects, you know?
That's right.
I would like to know what, what happened there. Because, you know, so anyway, that, and then just on funding going forward, I know that the amount that they put out on Friday for districts is about 130 million of a $266 million package. So, are we expecting additional funds to be coming?
I'm not aware of that. I think that there's been conversation, my understanding is that the, there's money that the state is looking to distribute for its own needs and the projects that it's funding. I will tell you, I don't, well, I'm stating the obvious, everybody could use a lot more.
Right.
And to the uncertainty that we're discussing, you know, continuing in hybrid for a full year is the most expensive option, to a large degree. So, you know, we, we hope this is not over, the level of support we're getting. We're very grateful what we get, we could use more.
Yeah, I just think, you know, for those who are listening or watching, and just for us as a body, or when Christine talks to the other chairs and whatnot, you know, Fairfield kids at the end of the day ended up getting about 100 bucks each for the year.
Yeah. Absolutely.
So, you know, I could probably just speak for myself that it's probably a pretty unacceptable solution at this point, whether it be federal or state. So, I'm hoping that comes true and that we continue to advocate on that as, as a community. Thank you.
I would just also like to mention that the ESER number, the 231, that's the public school portion. The number was actually, you might have seen a higher number of like 286. The difference is going to the non-public schools.
Thank you, Ms. Muncell. Thank you, that's helpful, thank you.
So, are we all set with this document, it sounds like?
Any other questions from the board? Ms. Maxi Cannelly?
Oh, yeah, do we have any sense, and I apologize if somebody already asked this, I don't think I heard it, do we have any sense of what we saved by virtue of the number of parents who opted out of transportation?
We, no, we're, transportation is such, it's so preliminary. We, until we actually nail down the actual routes and, and what we need to do, I can't, I can't tell you much about transportation as far as costs.
Well, I'm, I'm not looking to make an extra job for anybody, but at, once this is nailed down, if it would be possible to attempt to quantify that, one, I would love to be able to have us give that feedback to the public, that those who were able to opt out, that it did make a difference for the school budget. I think that'd be great, and maybe we'd talk even others into it. I'd also wanted to throw out there to the board that one thing that we talked about in policy was the possible, I mean, there is such a thing as a plan we can't afford. And I had introduced the idea in policy, I'm not looking for anyone, obviously, to take action on this now, but I wouldn't want to blindside anybody either, that if, one way of making budget, if we had, did need to have a conversation about our transportation policy in terms of what distances qualify for a bus, this would not be a popular conversation, it would not be well-received by the public. I know that ahead of time even as I say it, but it is an, an option that would be before us. Essentially, what it would be doing would be forcing more students off the bus by changing the distances that qualify. So, again, I'm not advocating for that right now, but I did feel it appropriate to put the board on notice that it is one avenue that we could look at, and maybe it wouldn't have much impact at all, I don't know. But, it is something that could be explored possibly. So, slings and arrows at me, I'm the one saying it. And it has gone, it has gone no further than that, but I did just want to say it.
Mrs. Maxi, I just want to follow up on just one comment about parents opting out. I think that we should not necessarily be looking for a positive budget impact, that part of the reason why we were hoping that parents would opt out would just be to reduce the number of students on a bus to enable us to socially distance per some of the state guidelines that were out there. Just a reminder to that.
Yeah, except that, once we made the decision to go hybrid, one of the first questions I asked was, does that mean that we are also pursuing, I mean, we're doing this of our own volition, we're not doing it because of the infection rate. The infection rate from the state came with very clear guidance that if you're in that middle area, you must reduce your bus capacity by 50%. We opted for the hybrid model, we are not being forced to do this on transportation, but the first question I asked is, are we then going to that middle column stipulation for transportation? So, in fact, if all of those parents did not opt for it, but we were voluntarily still doing the 50%, in fact, we were, we'd be talking about an exorbitantly higher number for transportation.
Yes.
Because of a decision we made voluntarily to, not based on infection rates. So, I guess, I, I hear your point, but I don't see how this could not be perceived as a positive impact on the budget, even as the budget transportation. impact on the budget, even as the budget transportation line goes up due to the decisions we've made. But feel feel free to explain later how, if I got something wrong there.
No, no, I'm not suggesting that we are following the transportation model, but I think just as they're planning the bus route in terms of cohorting, it just may not be the same of reducing capacity in non-COVID times. That's all. Not suggesting we're following the hybrid model for transportation. Mr. Asa.
You're, there you go. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Sorry, Nick Asa, I was double muted. Um just to piggyback on Mrs. Max and Canelli, um two things. One, I don't necessarily see what she said as looking as a positive impact on the budget um with regards to transportation. I would look at it more as a mitigation of um a deficit in our budget. So I don't think we could really say that it would be, you know, benefiting our budget. Basically, it was just softening the blow. Um and with regard to the idea of um expanding the distances to the state guidelines as far as walkers compared to what our district does, um you know, this is not a new idea. This is something that we've discussed and and we actually discussed in budget season. Um and several of us were interested in this and we didn't want to put staff time into it at that point. Um but I would echo that I would be interested, depending on how things pan out, and I'm not saying right off the bat, um but depending on how things pan out, this is something that I would be interested in in looking at uh potentially too. So I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Asa, and totally agree. This is not a new um, you know, talking point as we're looking at budget, um budgets in years past. Uh Ms. Max, Canelli, back to you?
That was it.
Okay. Um, sure, Ms. Lieber?
Hi, Jennifer Lieber here. Um Ms. Munsell, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I only see on this list in terms of additional um security expenses, Police Department for Traffic Control, is that correct?
Yes.
So if um at some point we assess that we need additional security measures, would those, or do you know, if they would come from our SRO support, or is there potential that we might need to hire additional security elsewhere?
Um, I don't, I, I
I might be bad.
Yeah.
Um to your, to your question, Ms. Lieber, I I would say that um we may need to look for additional costs outside of our current SRO staffing, um given some of the potential conditions we're going to have to um address.
Do you think it's possible to get any sort of estimate on what that might look like um just from a budget perspective?
Uh I would, it might be premature to do that. I think when we have a better understanding of what we need to do, then yes, I think we can look at uh building schedules and other types of issues that would help kind of define the parameters of that.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Ms. Munsell?
I should mention that with the midday run, um the midday elementary runs, we will need crossing guards uh midday and and Angeles has been working with the police department to um to identify that. Now, we, that's, that's, we pay a portion of it, we like something like $10,000 and the rest of it is an impound covered by the police. So um whether or not there'll be additional cost to us for that will uh remains to be seen also.
Thank you for that clarification, Ms. Munsell. Ms. Lieber, any more questions? Uh, any other questions from the board? I'm scrolling through you. If I miss you, just feel free to jump in with your name. Okay, seeing none?
Okay, before I close this document, um column two, the expenses that have already been um encumbered, I tried to color code them. I can't really see them on my screen that well. Um but the, this um 15770 for instruction uh is pink and the 256 for technology, orange, and 343 for um maintenance is blue, and then the total is 615. I'm pointing that out because I want to show you on the new financial report. Um this is, this is Fund 20. Um this is the non-lapsing account. Um what we did is, this first section of the report is, is labeled COVID and it's got by department, um
Sorry, Doreen, it's Nick. Can can anybody else see this or is it just me that's not being able to see it? I just have a gray screen.
Uh, yes, so do I.
Can anybody see? Is it okay?
No, we're still seeing just gray. Well, board members, we have, does everybody have the document in front of them?
That's in the packet, correct?
It was, it was.
Okay. Um, the top portion of the, the um the document, about two, uh the two, two thirds of the um document is labeled COVID. Um and if you go all the way to the right, you'll see a number of 615, 290. That's the total amount that we've already incurred. Um because we haven't, um there's no budget here because we haven't deposited the fund yet. Um that that's still a zero, that 615 is um what we've actually um expended so far in total. And then at the bottom of of the document is the non-lapsing projects um and maintenance expenses that we moved over from the um budget as part of the the budget adjustments for this year. So um that's what the the non-lapsing fund reporting will look like. Uh any questions on that?
Any questions about this document? Okay. All right, seeing none. And just a reminder for the board and the public that the Board of Finance was very specific in that that 1.5 was to offset the reduction that was made to the operating budget, that those were to be used to cover operating expenses, non-COVID expenses, which is why it's broken out this way. All right, um.
Can you see this one?
No.
No. Okay, well, that's the third document, well, one out of three. The um, that was the third document, which is the details on the uh technology expenses, which are um on both spreadsheets.
If I click on the share content button again and choose the PDF option? There you go. There it is.
Okay. Okay, so here's the um, here's a non-lapsing uh report. And it's, it's hard to see, but here's, here's the numbers that are color-coded in this right-hand column um by department for what's already been expended. And the to, here's the total COVID number of the 615. And then the other um maintenance account um funding that was brought over. And here's the 1.522 that I was talking about, the the um, the other part of the 1.77 uh to total the 3.3 million. And then how about this one? Did that work?
Yep, I can see that.
This is the uh the technology, the details. And here's the total of, the total um anticipated, the actual and the potential. So I I think that's, that's everything we knew, well, that's everything we knew about COVID expenses on Friday. This was updated on on Friday. Um and it's changed, I'm sure, already.
Thank you, Ms. Munsell. Um just some other things. You know, supplies for the classroom, now that students will not be able to share as they did in non-COVID times, additional books, additional uh, you know, just tests and supplies, manipulatives for math, is that factored into these numbers yet? Are you still waiting to see what those needs will be once teachers return to the classroom?
Uh I haven't, I haven't been told. The people have um purchased their supplies that they needed to to start the beginning of the year. Um so I I would expect that they've ordered enough, you know, they know that they, there can't be sharing of of supply, so uh I expect that they ordered enough to to do that. Um and we just bought the bags to be able to to facilitate the um uh, you know, separation.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for clarifying. Um Ms. Jacobson?
Hi, Jen Jacobson, quick question for whoever wants to answer it. Um on the technology spreadsheet, the second section, the webcams for teacher desktops in school to allow use of online meeting tools, no cameras built into the machines. So I was just wondering, um we ordered, it looks like we got 100 of those, and I was just wondering if that was all that was needed, because the other ones do have cameras in order to facilitate the synchronous learning portions of things um for this year, or is that enough? Um so just a little clarity on, you know, is Y100?
That, that hasn't been purchased yet. That was identified as a potential need. Um I'll let uh Secie or Nancy respond about the need. Um.
Hi, Nancy Burns, the Director of Technology. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. It's, it's calling me unmuted, so I guess it's kind of crazy. We estimated the 100 based on the number of desktops that we have out there for teachers who do not have an allocated laptop. Um so that's where that number came from.
Okay. Are those um teachers who have a desktop and don't have an allocated laptop responsible for any, you know, actual, are these, you know, who need to deliver math and English and core curriculum items who don't have the capability at this point?
It was an anticipated expense, so it isn't an actual number at this point. We're still evaluating who has devices, who doesn't have devices, and what they're actually doing.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to make sure we're ready to deliver this hybrid model.
Yeah, no, I I believe we're in good shape. It it was really more of a backup plan for um those areas that we didn't need it. We didn't need it, okay?
All right, thank you, Nancy.
You're welcome.
Jen, then? Um, Ms. Max and Canelli?
Um, thank you. Whoops, hold on. Uh, oh, I did take it off mute, sorry. Um it's kind of just follow up the same line of questioning. The headphones and the additional Chromebooks, I don't understand their use.
Well, the headphones
Is a purchase of 9500 units and then the Chromebooks, it was an additional
Okay, well, yeah, let's take the Chromebooks first.
An additional
The Chromebooks were in addition to the original budgeted plan, which was to add devices to the elementary schools. So as part of the COVID response, we made the determination to expand the one-to-one program to grades three, four, and five. Um so the delta there between what was originally budgeted and the number of students in grade three, four, and five we needed to accommodate is represented on the spreadsheet. The headphones was something we discussed because if you have children in school who are on Chromebooks and they're all listening to a web, um like a Google Meet or something to that effect, you certainly don't want everybody hearing um everybody's video because they don't necessarily run synchronously. Um so that was the intent behind the headphones. We're in the process at this point of determining how many actual headphones we need to purchase. And as we talked about the other instructional supplies, um headphones cannot be shared in this environment. Um so we came up with the one per student. We have not executed that yet because we're still evaluating what we actually have available in the school.
Okay, but um to this, unfortunately, I don't know if it's on my end or or on where. I I couldn't quite get what your explanation of the delta on those Chromebooks. I know we budgeted for a full rollout of Chromebooks three through five, so where did we fall short? I'm, I couldn't hear you.
Okay, sorry, there's, there's, there's some sound interference and I'm hearing, so I don't know if you're hearing that as well. Um what I was saying is, we did not budget initially for grades three, four, and five to receive Chromebooks. What we budgeted for was to increase the number of devices that were available in the elementary school. With the result of COVID, we took some funds from last year and then we identified some COVID um funding that was available in order to accommodate getting devices one-to-one for students in grades three, four, and five. So it's the difference between the budget that was just increasing the number of devices generally available to K5 to allow us to do a delivery of devices to grades three, four, and five. Is that more clear?
Um it it is clear, but I know we discussed in the spring that we had gotten some COVID relief money, which went, is that what this is in reference to? Because I know I asked about how do, how are we purchasing for three through five, and we were told that it was through COVID relief money, but I thought that was in last school year's budget. Is that not the case?
So I can speak to that. This is the Kia Parish. So um initially, it was supposed the the application, the grant application from the state for the ESSER funds was supposed to close back in late July. Um because of some recent developments that happened on a federal level where there were some reallocations of those funds in terms of the split between um private and public schools, they closed the application for a period of time. And so that application just reopened. We submitted it uh prior to the deadline. The deadline actually was August 20th, and so we are awaiting those funds. But they were, they are still considered, from the state perspective, a 2020 grant, even though we're not receiving them until pretty much the start of the 2021 school year. But that's that 231,000 that Doreen spoke about in one of her previous reports.
Okay, I I just, I knew we've talked about this before, so I I just want to try and to square this. Um but regarding the headphones, just one question academically, are we saying that while the kids are in school for their twice-a-week opportunity of having live instruction, that they're going to be on their headphones watching videos?
No, no. So there may be, there may be times in which a teacher refers them to a video, a quick video that they need to watch. We're not talking about the entire timeframe or the entire class period. It may be a quick, you know, two- to three-minute video that they need to watch on their individual laptop, but mostly in terms of those students that are at home on those remote days. You know, if you have more than one child and they're all working um at the same time, they want to be able to listen to whatever or or access whatever resources their teachers have put together without it interfering with that of their their sibling.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, moving on to committee and liaison reports. Does anybody have anything to share? I know summer's kind of quiet. Okay, Ms. Max and Canelli?
Um, thank you. On policy met just prior to these meetings, and I just wanted to put the uh board on alert that not only do you have that list of policies um from today, which at least you're getting a first reading of um for a vote on September 8th, but we also um have now just decided to add a special meeting next week for policy to discuss three to discuss three more. And if we do move those out of committee, they would likely be needing a one-and-done on September eighth as well. So, I just wanted to give everybody that heads up. Uh, the three policies that we're talking about for that are our attendance policy, the one that is on, in your packet for today, but shouldn't have been, um, because we still need to look at some language on that. The recently approved policy six nine 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 on distance learning. Uh, we're looking at some language changes in there, uh, working with Mr. Cummings. And then also, uh, the, uh, student needs, uh, with life-threatening food allergies policy. We are looking at that one as well for some possible changes. So, again, that's going to be a meeting next week to be put on the agenda for the following week, uh, likely for a vote. Uh, another issue that came up in policy was regarding masks, because I know we've seen lots of questions about this on social media. Um, and actually, if I could just hear definitively from Ms. Deasy, uh, for the sake of the board, that one of the, we are not going to have, unlike what some other districts have done, have a separate mask policy, that we are in those new COVID policies, um, that you got for a first read for today, that one of them, um, opens a door to have the, uh, have the masks discussed in, uh, the administrative regs laid out for the public. And though the specific guidance on masks, we believe, according to Mr. Cummings, that that should be addendum number nine, hopefully coming out, uh, at the end of this week. So, we don't have that specific information yet, but when we do, I'm sure it will be sent out. And then, um, Ms. Deasy, can you help me remember which one of those first three would this be part of for the reg?
Yes, it's C nineteen-two, which is health and safety protocols related to the COVID nineteen pandemic. So, uh, mask regulations, it, it will be proposed as an administrative regulation to attach itself to that policy.
Right. So, that's not something that will be coming before the board, but it is direction that will be coming and, and that the district will be putting out to parents. But, so again, as parents are asking that question, um, it would be good to be able to alert them to that. Thank you.
Any other committee reports? Mrs. Gerber?
Um, I just wanted to report, uh, with the Mill Hill Building Committee, um, they're going to be meeting tomorrow, um, so I'll have further information. But at the last meeting, um, they said that they had begun, um, work on site, uh, that one of the portables has already been demolished, uh, some trees were taken down. Um, there was going to be a redirection of the sewer line taking place last week, so we should be getting information about that tomorrow. And, uh, yeah, but the project has begun and, uh, and their work is going on there, um, every day. So, that's good news. And then I also, um, sat in on my first, uh, S B S B C meeting in a long time yesterday, and the Osborne Hill roof is, um, on track to be done. The roofing part will be done in the time for, uh, school to begin. Uh, there will be, um, some additional work, um, that is not roofing work that will need to be done, that will go a little into the school year, but the roofing part will be done by September eighth.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Okay, seeing none. Open board comment? Seeing none. Um, public comments, just again, for any members of the public who joined us late, um, we invite you to comment on agenda items for this meeting, either through the form that is posted with the today's agenda or through the public comment email address. And public comments will be summarized, verified, and posted with the meeting minutes. And with that, can I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Peterson, seconded by Ms. Lieber, all in favor? Motion carries nine zero. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.